It is 7:01. Welcome to the Jamaica Select Board Regular Meeting of Monday, April 10, 2023. I'm going to first start with a call for any late additions to the agenda.
So I had to do a thing on the email?
Yes, you want to just share that?
Yeah, to talk about posting the feasibility ways for our study report on the website, just confirm that process. And then to just address or review the town administrator report. And I know there are some questions on, some things on that, just what we got last week.
Okay, terrific. So I, I think, any objection? No? Any other late additions? Yeah, okay. So why don't we, what we'll do is, why don't we do this after the update on action to appoint the committee to recommend candidates for the treasurer and delinquent tax collector? And then before the regular business at the end of the schedule? So it's two items. Thank you, Derek. All right, with that, I'd like to call for a resolution to approve the minutes from the March 27 Select Board meeting.
So moved.
Okay. Any, any comments, changes?
Just one, Sarah, the one place where it said about the, it says Rossenville Market, and then it says Rossenville Market. It's just a title.
Okay.
Nothing else.
All right. With no further discussion, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the March 27 meeting?
All right.
None opposed? Unanimous? Thank you, Sarah. The next item on the agenda is the B-Trans presentation on the status of the Depot Street bridge plans. So I think we're going to switch and have this Zoom meeting taken over. And Greg, if I can ask you to introduce the folks that are presenting today?
Sure. So on the screen here is Gary LaRoche, who works for the state for B-Trans. And then we have Sean James, who is, I believe, the engineer with the engineering firm. And just right in front of me, I apologize for not having that, having the name.
Foyle Tanner.
Foyle Tanner, correct. Sorry, yes. And so what I'm going to do here now, Sean, I assume you have a PowerPoint presentation or something of that nature? We were just discussing earlier that having a little bit of internal technicalities of making you a co-host or sharing your screen. So I'm going to temporarily turn you over to be the host to make your presentation. I know you're a trustworthy guy. And then we'll, we'll have you turn that back. Let's see if I can go. There we go.
All right. All right, so how about that? Can you see the first slide?
Yes.
All right, so Gary, you've got to kick us off.
Yeah, I'll kick us off. So, hi, everyone. As introduced, I'm Gary LaRoche, the project manager, B-Trans project manager for the Depot Street Bridge project. And Sean James with Foyle Tanner, he's the consultant project manager, meeting designer of the project on their end. So we've recently completed preliminary plans, so we wanted to come out and provide an update to the select board on kind of where we're at.
All right, great.
All right, so, yeah, we're, yeah, go ahead. Sorry.
All right, go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, so during the presentation, we're going to run through the project development process, provide an update there, where the project's located, some of the existing conditions, give an overview of the preliminary plans, how we're going to maintain the traffic throughout the construction of the project, and then conclude with the schedule and project estimate, and we'll have that as questions, of course. So of course, as a tribute, Gary LaRoche, here is Sean James. And we're going to just provide an update for the project. So the last time B-Trans came to visit the town was during the project definition phase, or the, also known as the scoping, scoping of the project. So the scoping manager, Laura Stone, and Foyle Tanner worked together during the scoping phase to present alternatives. Since then, the town has selected alternative to rehabilitate the truss. And we've recently completed preliminary plans, so the arrow showing where we initiated the project design. So now that we've completed preliminary plans, we're now going to move into the property or contact. I actually have property or visits set up for next week. Not all of them confirmed quite yet, but I'm hoping to hear back from soon. Then Foyle Tanner is going to prepare environmental impact plans, so we can start the environmental permitting portion of the project, and concurrently start the right-of-way process to acquire the easements that we need to construct the project. And then final plans, developing final plans, specialist estimate concurrent, also concurrent to the environmental right-of-way process, and then finally advertise the project. And I'll bring it over to Sean to discuss the project more in depth.
All right, thanks, Gary. So these next couple of slides, you've been on an earlier presentation, are pretty similar. We did shorten it a little bit, but just for the benefit of people that aren't familiar with, you know, the project or a little bit of the background. So the bridge cross is on Depot Street, right as you get to the entrance of the state park and near the, near the village school. And little history of it, it's historic truss fabricated 1926, and 165-foot span. So a pretty, pretty good span, you know, for the truss, and limited on width and height. So, you know, a little over 13 feet between the curbs, 14/7 vertical clearance. And I think the part we talked the most about is the current weight limit for eight tons. So this is just a little history of it, but I think the important is, important part of it, that it became, you know, and it's on the national, meets the requirements of National Register, and it's part of the historic bridge programmatic agreement. So basically, that is the historic review process that kind of guides us as far as what, you know, what to do with this looking forward. So it's a steel truss, wood deck, sitting on dry-laid stone masonry abutments. And just kind of a picture, this is looking upstream or the downstream elevation, just showing a, you know, schematic view of it, as well as what it, you know, what it looks like in real life. We look in section, again, just looking down the bridge. And again, I know this is a little hard to read, that's kind of not the intent, but just show some pieces where we have the upper bracing and the floor system and then the trusses. So on a biannual basis, B-Trans comes out and inspects the bridge, and they look at it on the National Bridge Inspection Standards ratings. So standard ratings across the country, anywhere from zero to nine. So nine is basically brand new, and zero is closed. And so where this rates is, and this is as of October 7, 2021, still rates a six. So that's in satisfactory condition. So the deck, superstructure, and substructure, all sixes, and the channel is in very good condition. The approaches, there are some limited sightlines to the north approach, satisfactory on the south, and you come across, and this is, you know, on the top left is, is on the park side. And I guess one question we had right now, it's, and we can cover this kind of at the end, but one thing we're looking for a little input on is, right now, there's not, it's not a high-volume road. It probably gets, it definitely gets busier this summer. But one approach would be to put a stop sign on the one end and yield on the other. And I guess we were just looking for some thoughts on that, if it made sense, or if it's kind of functioning, you know, functioning adequately now. In the days that we've been out there, really haven't seen any, like, two cars meeting in the middle of the bridge or anything like that. So just, just something we were, you know, look for some input later. Kind of working top-down, and this is, this is just current condition. So it has a wood, wood deck on it, transverse planks, and then the fronter boards, sitting on top of these stringers, which have some section loss. And you can see the, the sand buildup. So the, the deck is open to some degree and lets the sand come down to, down through. Looking at the trusses, really in good condition, and I think a lot of that has to do with probably not a lot of salt hitting this, you know, limited winter use. But there's a little bit of section loss in some of the areas, in portions of the trusses, but overall, yeah, satisfactory condition. Substructure, again, well-built, stone masonry abutments, a little bit of, you know, some of the chinking stones have fallen out, but overall, again, satisfactory, good condition there. And resources, I, I cut these down, you know, Gary's input, but we look at the different resource IDs in the area. The table at the bottom list, they're basically a checkbox and everything. So I'll just read those. So wetlands, surface waters, flood plain, significant habitat, regional and threatened endangered species, farmland soils and invasive species. So this project area that we're in, that will be impacted, has all of those. And that's part of the environmental review process and the permitting process. So just as part of the beginning of the process, we look to see if these things are in the area, which they are, and then we have to work around them in the permitting process. So that was all review, kind of what we talked about before. And so again, we're here tonight to talk about preliminary plans, and we showed in that timeline, we do the scoping report, there's preliminary, final, contract, and then we get to the good stuff, we do construction. So again, we're early enough that we're starting to get some of the details worked out, but there's still room for, you know, input and comments. And in a nutshell, what the project is looking to do is rehabilitate the existing steel truss for 20-ton live build, or H20, as it's sometimes referred to. Approach work, and then we're going to, jumping ahead a little bit, we'll cover it in more detail, is we're going to maintain traffic throughout construction, but we'll use a temporary bridge, and we'll show where that's located upstream. So as part of the preliminary plans, we'll talk about just site layout, some of the design characteristics, what the typical section will look like, utilities, and then maintenance of traffic. So for site layout, and I'll show a plan view of this in the next slide, basically the roadway, as you see it today, is going to be routine. We're going to tweak the alignment just a little, widen a little, but essentially, it's going to remain as is. We are putting new guardrail on all corners of the bridge, that will be a little bit longer in a couple quarters. And there's a little bit of a stream relocation, and I'll show that on the next slide, and some additional drainage. So in plan view here, the key components are the, at the ends of the project, kind of that lighter, I'm not sure exactly what these colors are, it's like a paralel thing, but the lighter browns are existing, that's pavement that's going to stay as is. The dark brown on the roadway is the work we're doing, so going to be reconstructing that part of the road. And then the, again, I'm not sure on your screen, but on the sides, the olive is kind of like the permanent impacts, and then the blue is the river. And we do have this internet and stream upstream that's kind of listed there, that we are going to realign a little bit, and I'll show where that ends up in maintenance of traffic. So essentially, as you're looking at the project when it's complete, this, this is the extent of the work. And the one new thing, I don't know if my cursor works on the screen, but over on the right-hand side, we are putting some additional drainage in just a, a couple of catch basins to help collect the water and drain better on that end. So that's the overall site. And then we look at the, as we're working through it, and again, this is a table with a lot of information, but these are the design characteristics. This is right out of the scoping report, so not really new. But what you'll see a lot in the standards here is when we look at, you know, the bridge width, the horizontal alignment of the road, some of the vertical alignment of, you know, the road or the profile, there are some standards who B-Trans standards, but that's understandable. It's a low-volume road with historic truss. So these aren't issues per se, it's just pointing out that they don't meet the current state standards, which is okay on a historic, historic bridge. So there's some of the roadway alignment type issues, and then more with bridge railing, pedestrians, hydraulics. Hydraulics are good, there's no concerns with the storms, and it is dam control. And then structural capacity of the new bridge is going to be much better than it is, but it doesn't meet the current state standard. So looking at the typical section here, and again, I know the text is small, it's hard to present some of these, but I have it on the left. So we're going to paint all the members, so anything that's new or existing that's steel gets repainted. There's a couple areas of the lower cord, so the lower cord is the bottom portions of the truss near where it sits on the abutments. We're going to replace a couple pieces of those, and it's, basically, there's been a lot of sand buildup and deterioration on those over, over the years. They've lost, some of the steel is gone, so we'll replace those. The deck is going to be new, and actually, the whole floor system will be new. So starting with the deck, what you'll be riding on is, is a white oak wearit surface. So you'll see that. That will sit on top of a pressure-treated glue-lam deck. And glue-lam is just glue-laminated wood, it's smaller pieces of wood glued together. And the advantage to that is it's a solid deck surface. So I showed before where it's turned, the pulp in, and the sand comes down, and it's sitting on, on these stringers. That won't happen with this to that extent, because the deck is solid, will be solid all the way across the bridge. And then in order to get that higher capacity, the next layer down, the floor beams and the stringers, those all get replaced. The bearings where the truss sits either get repaired or replaced. The lower lateral bracing, there's a couple pieces that need to be replaced, and then the portion, I showed that it was stone abutments, but there's a concrete back wall and cap on those that's going to get replaced as part of the project as well. So that's the scope of the work, and the roadway pretty much stays the way it is, the truss largely the way it is, other than the new floor system. Now, in order to accommodate this, we do have some utility relocation. So the only utilities in the area are overhead, which right now are upstream, and I'll show a plan, this in plan view. So we pre-amount power, consolidate communications and Comcast, and we did meet with them at the site a while back and talk about where to relocate and why, and I'll explain why as well. So what we're looking to do is permanently relocate those downstream to the existing bridge, and as I mentioned, we did the initial coordination. So here's a plan view, just rough sketch with the bridge in the middle, and this yellow line is, well, there's, there's a yellow note points to where they are now. And the issue with that is where the wires are now, we're going to be doing temporary maintenance of traffic through there, and then the contractor, they need cranes or heavy equipment to get out the truss, the wires are in the way. So one of the first steps will be to relocate those permanently to where shown on the yellow line downstream of the bridge. So related to that, maintenance of traffic, and we know this is the only way in a dead-end road, so, you know, unfortunately, there's no way to kind of phase work, you know, do half at a time on a truss. It's either, it's open or it's not. So the approach here, and I have a graphic to explain this, but we'll be looking at putting in a temporary bridge upstream that the contractor will install. So that would be, step one of the project would be to relocate the utilities, get those out of the way, and then they would come in and do this temporary bridge, an approach road. We'll have one lane of traffic, just like there is now at all times. There'll be some temporary lighting and signals at each end just for safety and allowing people in and out. And the area we looked at, as I mentioned, there were a lot of resources in the area. One is, in particular in the park, is a lot of really archeologically sensitive areas. So we had a firm come out and do an evaluation of the area that we're going to be having the temporary bridge in, and they cleared that. In other words, they did some test pits and didn't find anything of concern in that area. Also with maintenance of traffic, there's, we've talked at these meetings and other coordination meetings with the Army Corps about the Ball Mountain Project, the dam, and the use of this temporary bridge. So there's some ongoing discussions there, but kind of a picture's worth a thousand words here, is, is this is what's proposed. So in this view, downstream is the, is the bridge in Depot Street, and then upstream, we'll come in with a new road, and then you can see where that, it's going to cross where that stream is, so I mentioned that stream relocation. Temporarily, what we'll do is we'll put a pipe in there to, so the flow's maintained. And then there'll be a new bridge crossing that's contractor-designed, so they have different options on that. We try to balance a couple things. We want to balance all the environmental impacts versus allowing the contractor to do their work. And it's a little bit wider than the current bridge, but that's only because on the park side, we need to have a, have a room for turning radius, because you kind of come over into a T, so we need a wider bridge there. So particularly like campers, I think is really what we're looking at. Campers will have to come across and make that turn into the park. So this is the proposed maintenance of traffic, and unfortunately, these, both of these, the utilities and this, it's going to require some tree clearing, which is, there's some really nice large trees out there. We are going to replant when we're done. B-Trans has a planting plan to replace, not any kind, but replace all the trees that were put down. So that's basically the plans we're at at preliminary stage. I'm going to turn it back to Gary for, talk about schedule and estimate where we're at with that, and then we'll, we'll open it up to any, any questions and comments.
All right, excellent. So the, we're scheduling to advertise the project and start construction fall of '24. Our current preliminary engineering is 510,000, so it's 80%, the cost split is 80% federal, 15% state, and 5% town. The construction cost estimated at preliminary plans is 3.949 million, and has an 80% federal and 20% state share. This project was put into the IIJA, or the General Fund Bridge Program, so the town of Jamaica will not have a share in the construction cost of the bridge. I still need to send through a amendment to the finance maintenance agreement, and so you'll, you'll see that in the, in the near future, indicating that the town, or this, this funding split change to remove the town's responsibility for the construction cost. And we have a total cost estimate between preliminary engineering and construction of 4.459 million, with a town share of $25,500. So we have our current schedule, so we're, we have final plans coming up January 24, contract plans, in April of '24, advertise in July, and begin construction roughly in September. Generally, that, it's dependent on how quick the contractor finishes his pre-construction snow process, so we can provide the notice to proceed. All right, is there any questions?
Can you remind us how long the project will take once you get started in September of '24 roughly?
Absolutely. So we expect to install the temporary bridge of the fall of '24, and then the contractor will likely take a break through the winter, and then they'll return in spring, and then perform the truss rehabilitation, and then remove the temporary bridge by November of '25. The removal of the temporary bridge is dependent on the coordination with the Army Corps of Engineers and the, their, the progress of our project. There is possibility that the temporary bridge could be left in place until they're completed, but we haven't worked out those logistics yet, and the responsibility that they would have to take over as a result of that. So it's, that portion is to be determined, but the, the contract completion date for construction is November of '25.
Thanks. One quick question. So you showed in earlier photographs that it looked like some repair was needed to the stonework at the base of the bridge, but I didn't see that repair as listed on the, in the scope of work. Is, is that, is it just such a small detail, it doesn't actually make it to the bullet point, or do you not touch the stonework?
Yeah, no, that's exactly a good question. It's a, it's kind of a smaller part of it, but we would, the, the stones themselves are, are in good shape and good condition, so they're, it's kind of the, they put these chinking stones in to fill in the gaps and make sure you have good, you know, bearing on them, so that's what would be replaced or repaired.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
You have another question, Karen? Which side?
And then Andy.
Oh.
You mentioned that the utility lines are coming across on the other side now?
Yes.
It's a very scenic view when you're looking down the river, so I'm just wondering where exactly the utility lines are going to be up high, so you don't see them?
Right, they would be, really, it would be like if you picked them up off of the upstream and moved them downstream, they would be at the same elevation, generally the same distance off the bridge.
I guess I'm not familiar with, I can't.
I know, I feel like, I think it can't be that much of an obstruction, because I can't even picture that.
They're actually normally looking downstream, not necessarily upstream, but they're there.
People will head to the park.
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're roughly at the height of the top of the truss, I mean, so you don't really, you don't see them.
If you're standing on the bridge, right, they're like, right.
I assume.
A good question.
I just wanted to make sure.
Andy, did you have something?
Considering the Army Corps, does your temporary bridge, them maybe using your temporary bridge, does that affect like your, would you put the same bridge there if they weren't going to maybe be using it for their projects? If, if they're going to do that, it sounds like they're going to, and would they tell you how much longer they'd leave that temporary bridge there after we're done, or we find that out from them, or, or is that all still too early to ask?
So based on the need that, or the inquiry and need that I've received regarding the load capacity of the temporary bridge, and, you know, I, we're going to specify HL-93 temporary bridge despite the core. You know, there's, there was inquiries from the park that they want to do some logging operations on their property while, while the bridge is in place, as well as the Millers? Charles Miller reached out to me and inquired about that as well. So load capacity, I, you know, we're going to specify HL-93, which will accommodate the heavier trucks. The duration that the bridge is going to be there is The duration that the bridge is going to be there is up in the air still. It's more dependent on what the Corps comes back with, you know, with the schedule. Because V-Trans does not own temporary bridges to, you know, generally we rent the temporary bridges. And, you know, it's pretty costly for those rental fees. So we naturally try to, you know, get them out of there as quick as we can. So, you know, we don't have to pay that fee longer than necessary. But the Army Corps is also looking into temporary bridge, temporary bridges in their inventory. See if they have anything to help alleviate that coordination. So that's, that's kind of up in there as well.
Thank you.
Greg, anything else?
No, I guess maybe I've heard some of this before already, so that's, that's awesome. Thank you guys. And that was some of my questioning at this point to that Andy just addressed. Because I know that's been kind of a little fluid as far as the conversation with Army Corps. And they're not quite sure what they need or want or things like that. And there's a lot more detail that hinges on this beyond the bridge. I mean, this does then have a long ways to go to get to the dam. So my, my questions are similar to that.
If they did keep using the bridge, would they take over the payments? Or do you just get rid of it as soon as you're done with it?
If their, if their project was going to come in much later than like five, 10 years, you know, something like that, down the road, you know, we would, you know, we would take it out and they would have to put something back in. You know, it's like doubtful that the town would want to take any sort of share in renting a temporary bridge for their purpose. But, you know, I, I think that that can be worked out with them as we proceed through final plans to, to get that defined a little bit clearer. You know, that they would be responsible for, you know, the rental and removal and plantings after that temporary bridge is removed to restore the environmental resources that are required.
Susan, what do you do with the lumber from the trees that you remove?
Generally, unless otherwise specified on the project, the lumber becomes a property of the contractor. If it's on, the lumber comes off private property, then we can write agreements into the contract that essentially, you know, you either block it or you put log length in a file for the property owner to, to pick up or what have you. So there's, there's options.
Thank you.
So one last thing, is there any objection? Do, can we put the slides on the website as an update available? Or is it, is it not available for publication to the public?
I would imagine it's, it's public.
Well, this will be recorded since it's recorded.
Recorded by, yeah, it was a little, a little hard to, you know, it's nice to see. And I know that we all had access to the link, but I don't think that that was a public link. But if I just, Sean, is it okay if we, if we publish these slides? Especially the news about the new funding level for the town? I mean, that's amazing news. We had, you know, heavy-duty conversations as a town about the project and the burden it might have on the taxpayer. So this is quite dramatic positive news. So it just would be nice if we could publish the slides on our website.
I will see why not. I can, I can also put them on my, the SharePoint site that's publicly facing as well.
Yeah, I like this one. I mean, I mean, they're both great, but the other one that's up on the shared drive that you guys have is quite a lot more detailed. So it would be nice that people can go there if they want to find it. But this is a great summary that really just, you know, highlights, so to speak.
Especially, especially to homeowners.
Right, and Sarah has said we could put a link, you know, we could sort of advertise what it is and then just put a link. So we don't actually even have to host it.
If somebody sends you a link.
Yeah, so we need a link. We need whatever the link is. That would be great.
Okay, I can send that to Greg when I, when I post it. That's most helpful.
That's perfect, yep.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much. It was very helpful. It's a lot of information and I think really helpful to hear.
That's awesome.
Yeah, super great. Thank you. And Sean, if you could just switch me back, perfect, before you go away.
All right, thank you. So the next item of business is reviewing, reviewing and acting on overweight permits. Greg, they're down by you. Did you want to recite them? It's up to you.
Yeah, they're in the maroon.
Are you distracted with?
Yes.
Sure. So for Greg, do I have to do anything or just hang up and it goes back to you?
You got it.
I think if you click on the three little dots up on your, on your screen there, the drop-down menu will come up to say return host or give me the host or.
Make host.
Make host.
Or if he goes into the participant list and puts in your name as a.
I don't see that.
You just have to right-click. You don't have to click on those dots.
Oh, okay.
Just right-click on his picture.
That icon?
No, he has to right-click on you to be the host.
This is some of the channels we had before, our channel.
Okay, and then make host.
Yes, yep.
All right, very good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you both.
Thank you.
You're going everyone.
You too. All right, the maroon folder. Thank you, Greg.
I got these, they're all in this folder here, right?
Yes, those are all overweight. That, not yet. That's after this.
Okay, I, we have some overweight permits in here, several of them. I will, first one is AmeriGas. It is a, I'm going to have this down. I gotta wait to see if this, I'm guessing it's a fleet permit. $10 for the fleet. Yeah, so AmeriGas, based at locally St. Albans, Vermont. It's requesting a fleet permit for overweight permit. I'll make a motion that we accept AmeriGas's overweight permit request.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, second line is for Dead River Company, based out of Robertboro, Vermont. And I will make a motion that we accept Dead River Company's overweight permit request for fleet permit.
Second.
Any further discussion? No further discussion? All those in favor? Aye, unanimous, great. Anymore?
There are a couple, yes, we got.
Boy, yeah, it is spring.
Third one here is for Coda and Coda, based at Bellas Falls, the local office here in town. I will make a motion that we accept Coda and Coda's overweight, overweight fleet permit request.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? Call the vote. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, thank you.
Next one is for Bernie Brothers Construction for an overweight fleet permit request. They're based out of North Springfield, Vermont. And I will make a motion that we accept their overweight permit request.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? No, thank you. This is the time of year, just by the way, when most of these come in. So these meetings, you know, there'll be a lot. I'm always standing.
Interesting though, some of the fleets will use our town a lot, some just to buy changes.
Right, right. They can get their corridor.
They pay it.
They pay it. They pay it.
Next one is for BSP Transportation or Trans Inc., based out of Londonberry, New Hampshire, for an overweight fleet permit request. I will make a motion to accept their permit.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None, thank you.
And last but not least, National Energy Control Services, based out of Jasper, Indiana. I will make a request, I will make a motion to accept the overweight fleet permit for National Energy Control Services.
Second. Any discussion? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. I'll post. None, thank you.
Good, I did that.
Great. So which one is the, the Rossonville permit? Which folder is it?
It's just in the basket. It should have green on it if I printed it in color. It's just one page and it should have State of Vermont.
Okay, yep. So this is for an endorsement to the liquor license, basically. A tobacco substitute endorsement request from the Rossonville Marketplace. And they've submitted this through the state portal. And it's coming before us to approve this tobacco substitute endorsement, and I'll make a motion as such.
Second, so just for discussion, we suspect that this was supposed to have been included in what we approved two weeks ago, which was the package of beer, wine, tobacco. And tobacco is now a separate license. It used to be glom together. And I think this must have, right, this must have been something that they overlooked with the new, with the new changes. But other than that.
It's not, it's not a vape, it's not a license on its own.
Yeah, yeah, I did take a peek at it.
Aside from cigarettes?
It is separate to cigarettes, yeah. That's why this is a independent thing.
Right. How does everybody feel about vaping? Just to start, for your cigarettes?
I just didn't agree, yeah.
Very cheap.
No, I mean, as a very valid person, yes. To my knowledge, I'm not sure exactly how it happens, but to my knowledge, this has, there hasn't been any vaping location, retail locations within Jamaica.
And is this, this is to sell vape products?
Yes.
Correct.
Not valid, they can be out in store products, it's just the same.
I'd just like to mention that I literally just met with West River Valley tribes today as a director of the library. And they are doing an incredible vaping prevention program within the town of Jamaica. Parent education, because vaping, vaping is such a problem for young adults and children.
Right.
And so I just want to state that as, for me, it feels like a conflict to be supporting organizations that are trying to educate and prevent vape use and also say, but we'll sell it, no problem. And I know that there are a lot of other factors, but I thought it was worth mentioning that that initiative is happening in Jamaica.
It's happening in the whole state. There's a big push, you know, like tobacco.
And alcohol and everything, yeah.
You make a good point. And I was adamantly against the vape license, if it is a standalone license, but, you know, I don't want to take.
I don't want, so this isn't, right, right, right.
Retailers with cigarettes.
Right, my understanding is, and we can look into this, is that it's a, it's a broader category. So there's hemp, there's other tobacco substitutes. But I understand it does include vapes, but it was, yeah. So some that may or may not, you know, it can even be a nicotine alternative.
Like chewing tobacco and that? I shouldn't, I didn't know there was so much involved.
No, truly, that's part of your tobacco license.
Right, right, right. Those are what they call smoking alternatives. Those aren't, you know, tobacco substitutes.
And I believe they're all three independent. They, they don't, you don't need to have all of them. Obviously, like, you can, I believe, decline one if we so wish.
So right, right now, there are no stores in Jamaica that sell vape cartridges or?
Yeah, and I, I can't speak to what they're actually entitled to sell with that license. I think it more is the substitutes, which are, yeah, I, I understand, right, include vapes. But what is the, do you know the regs in Vermont on, on vapes?
No, I've no idea. I mean, I would assume they're similar to other places where you have to be 18 or older.
Right, right, right.
Would it be fair?
Twenty-one, twenty-one.
Fair to, it seems like it's new for all of us.
Want to put it off until the next meeting?
Yeah, they don't have to declare it on.
We can, don't.
I was like, we actually, Kate and I actually discussed, do we have them come in? So we can ask them, we can, we can absolutely delay this two weeks. And let's have them, you know, have someone come in and talk to us about what the scope is.
To my knowledge, I mean, in balance to that, get more research on the other side as well. Like, what are the rest state standards or just vaping as a health concern? Is this something that we want to?
And to my knowledge, I don't know if this is something brand new or we've just never had this requested before, because it is a new system.
Right, yeah, right, right.
And it may be just broken out for the first time.
Right, and they, and they.
To my knowledge, it's, it's new and I don't think they're entitled.
Right, I don't, I don't know. I just know that it sure looked like they made a mistake by not including it the first time around. And it was like.
I think it's fully within our jurisdiction, or whatever you want to call it, to put it off-table at least.
Yes, absolutely, well, table it.
It, it doesn't really go into effect until end of April. Yeah, yeah, to the next meeting.
And it's something that we have in place, but now it's.
We don't have, right, yeah.
I motion we table that till the next meeting.
Second. Any, any discussion on the motion? Okay, so we're going to do two things. I'm going to say we will disprove the tobacco substitute endorsement, subject to Andy's motion. So do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, any discussion with that? Can we vote?
Are we disproving it?
Yeah, we have to. Yeah, we have to decline it and then we're, we're going to act on Andy's motion, okay? Do you agree? Yeah, so all those in favor of, yeah, all those in favor of denying the approval? Please say aye. Aye, it's unanimous. Any further discussion on Andy's motion to table this until the next meeting?
Just, I like the idea of bringing in, putting out that invitation to bring it in.
Okay, and we will ask, we'll ask someone to, so we'll add to Andy's motion to invite the applicant to attend the next meeting and to discuss with us scope, et cetera. Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No, okay, great. Okay, the next one is mine, which is, so this again, we're going to, we're, we're going to, we're going to, it's a little, it's premature. It turns out it's premature. I think there's generally consensus in the, you know what, Karen, I have all the names and everything. Nice, here we go, okay. The Village Cemetery Association of Jamaica, Vermont, Inc. is generally in agreement to dissolve and to have the assets of the cemetery, which include the cemetery itself, as well as some monetary assets best in the town. However, there's some concern about adding to the burden of the town at this time, which I appreciate. It is, we are struggling with territory loss, obviously. So what is likely to happen is we're going to finish, we have drafts of all the paperwork. We'll just make sure that everybody in the, all the members of the Village Cemetery Association of Jamaica, Vermont, Inc. have a chance to review those drafts, give us any edits. Once we have either a candidate who we are onboarding or we have a treasurer in place, at that point, the, the association will, you know, burden, allow the burden to be added to the town. So that was where that came out. So this is really, we're not going to approve anything tonight. That's the update. And there will be, I actually sent you the resolution, Sarah, so if you wouldn't mind reading it to see if you had any edits for it. So we'll be all ready to go when we're, when we're in a position to accept the extra work.
Is there any, there's no time, like, schedule type thing that, that is necessary? I know there may be some desire, but is it not necessary?
I think the only thing is, is getting somebody in there to clean it up for spring cleanup and start mowing, which doesn't start until.
Couple weeks.
Right, right, it's a green or anything tomorrow.
But if I understand what you just said, Jessica, they will continue to operate, so to speak, until we decide we can take this on? Is that kind of?
Right, well, yeah, until. Right, well, yeah, until we mutually agree that, you know, the town, yeah. So they can keep operating, they can enter to contracts. And what happens then is on the cut-off, cut-over date, the liabilities of the association become the liabilities of the town. So that contract would then be a contract with the town. We'd probably novate it, I mean, we don't have to be too technical, it's, you know.
But they can, it'll get mowed.
It'll get mowed, I mean, it's.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I mean, everything feels strongly that the cemetery, you know, be maintained.
We're not going to leave you a cemetery to be aye.
Yeah, well, related, our bids still haven't, our request for bid for our mowing hasn't gone out yet either due to a paper technicality with the drought we're requiring. It never got posted. So we've just, in the process now of reposting, so, but, so we may be a week or two.
Right. And we'll, what we're gonna do is actually add the cemetery that's going to be coming on board so that we can get, so that the same folks that are bidding on the, on the whole cemetery project will also bid on this one. So we've got two names already that we're, hopefully receive bids from. Any other?
Reliable, sort of.
Yeah, yeah, people who worked for the town before and, right, exactly. So any other questions on the cemetery status? All right, thank you. All right, so the next item on the agenda is just to update everyone on where the process of our coping with the terrible loss of Terry stands. I'll try not to be emotional about it. So as we've discussed at the last meeting, our town charter required the appointment of a committee that will seek applications, walk through potential candidates, vet them and recommend them to the board, the select board for interviews. And that committee was required to be composed of one lister, one select board member, four townspeople, and as I mentioned the last meeting, although technically an auditor, we don't have to meet that requirement because we do not have a town auditor. We have an independent auditor. So with that, we got a lot of, a lot of folks who agreed to participate, which is wonderful. One of whom is in the room with us now, Susan All, thank you, is one of our four residents. The others are Tom Tolbert, our very recent former select board member, and Jordan Duke, who was, was also, he served in town government for many years and, you know, will be a wonderful addition. And then last is John Began, who is a long time Jamaica resident, very, a professional and also just, you know, wonderful. Very involved in the Jamaica Planning Commission and otherwise also very familiar with town operations. From the listers, Pat Melons will join us, thanks. That was another contribution. And Sarah, and I will be the member from the select board. And Sarah has raised her hand to help and be support to the committee. So it looks like the first meeting will be Wednesday at six for about a half an hour and that's really gonna be primarily to get the job posting up and out and solicit any other recommendations for ways to identify potential candidates. So anyone who wants to join, participate, or just email Sarah or email me any ideas or even candidates, please do. I think, any questions on that?
Derek seems to. I've arranged to phone that, just, and I don't know if this is the right format for the discussion. But in looking through, you know, the draft, proposed draft descriptions, it's a, it's a huge position, which we know, and Terry had such longevity and history and knowledge. And, and given that, as my understanding, the, the two roles, town clerk and tax collector back each other up as each other's assistant. And just from a, I just wonder, like, with such a big role, does that make sense? Or is there, is there a possibility to consider if the town clerk and tax collector have an assistant that supports both of them instead of them supporting, you know, just situations like this, to have an extra person who's an admin or just, you know, an entry level.
Right.
But that could be that backup role for both positions. It might create some sustainability and some sort of resilience to the system.
Right. So just as a quick correction, so the delinquent tax collector, that's like a, that's an add-on. Right, so, right, just so we know, we're talking about the town clerk and the treasurer. Those are the primary responsibilities. And because we're a small town, I mean, we have, you know, we're, we're able to sustain those two positions, but they have to, there has to be a knowledge transfer with respect to them. We're fortunate because Sarah has a background in finance, so she's done a lot of these functions in earlier roles and then, of course, was a black secretary Terry. Whether that's worked considering the sudden loss, you know, is definitely something that can be discussed. From, you know, one organization perspective, part of that may end up being driven by the candidates we find.
Right.
If we, if we literally cannot find a Terry, we're gonna be faced with a, with a hard decision in that regard. You know, it's, you know, you're more of a specialist in this than I am, you know. Succession planning for sudden death is kind of a not, not a thing, right? But, but even if, just in terms of succession planning, was this the right setup? That's, I think those are good questions, no matter what, and.
Yeah, I mean, I realize that's, that's a big conversation to talk about adding another position. If it was an entry level, part-time, that could support both people in the office, it might help the town a lot.
I agree, that may end up being needed.
Yeah, like, bringing, they haven't done this before, you know, so they have a great accounting background and know all that, but just learning the municipal part of it is overwhelming. So for them to come in and learn the treasurer's job and the town clerks at once. I mean, like, when I started Terry, it was like, here, you're the town clerk, get out of my office, you know. But it, you know, they really are expected to, we are expected to cover for each other when one of us isn't here. So it's like, you need to be able to do a dog license or a marriage license or print a birth certificate or, you know, I mean, none of it's that hard on my end, but it takes time to learn it and to understand what you have to do because it's all statute-driven and you have to do it a certain way. You can't just make a copy and say, here you go. You have to fill out forms and get IDs and all that fun stuff, so, yeah. I agree with Derek.
Well, I think we should just wait.
Well, then the committee can roll.
Right.
Well, I mean, this is brand, brand new, this is just like unbelievable.
Unbelievable.
And, you know, we did just add some more, we added the town administrator and, you know, before. I just think we should wait a little while, I mean, I'm not dismissing any of it, but.
We're just planning to.
I mean, I, I mean.
Yeah, absolutely.
Just see, you know, the committee's been formed already, thankfully.
Yeah, yeah, and I think everyone who's agreed, goes here, goes there.
I, I had sent an email out saying that I would represent the town as a select board person. I misunderstood the process as I was, I remember hiring, you know, we interviewed people. I misunderstood that and I told Jessica I would do it and then I, I'm really wrapped up in something until the beginning of May, so I sort of backed out and Jessica said she would do it, so, thank you.
Yes, but Andy's welcome to join any of the meeting.
Afterwards, after, like, April, May third or whatever, I get out of this big commitment.
You better write a statement.
Just goes away. It goes away forever.
You hope it goes away.
No, it's good, well.
It will, okay, all right. Yeah, so that's, any other questions? And I'll, you know, since we, one of the benefits of having a member of the select board on the committee is that at each meeting, we can have a quick update on how things are going.
And do we need to do anything now or the committee is free to, free to fly?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're starting, first things first, we gotta get this draft posted. Yeah, and, and start, start, start the search, yeah. Okay, so that takes me through to the two items, Derek, that you wanted to add, do you want to?
Sure.
Share your thoughts?
One, I was just, I think we, I don't know if we should talk about this, but to post the wastewater, the sixty percent report that they shared at the meeting, to just post that and be able to go to the meeting? Because I don't know that, I don't think it was recorded and I didn't see minutes, but just to give the public, like, here's the information from that session.
I had a conversation, whatnot with us, but with Mike and me being on the skeptic committee, and I had a conversation with Ryan Zero from the Plant Committee, who's also represented on the skeptic committee. And I think in general, the consensus is that we should be doing a little bit more to let people know where we're at, how far we've gone, what, what's happened so far. And some of the, some of the concern, I think, is that we, we start presenting too much and get to the point, not that there is ever such a thing as too much, but you present too much and it just answers, it poses more questions than answers.
Right.
But I think we can still get a little bit further along and let more of the answers be known without stating just where we've been, not necessarily maybe to see where we're going. I mean, we all know, but anyway, so that, I mean, there is a.
Are there slides on the website? Okay, I thought there were some slides.
There is a presentation, like a speaking match, yeah, and I think we've all seen it or not all, but.
It's not, it's not something that you can find as a member of the general public.
No, that's not exactly what I'm talking about. So we, I say we, meaning the skeptic committee, it's, it's not.
The only thing online is the flyer announcing that meeting.
Ah, got it.
So it looks good, but.
Yeah, no, 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 I mean, and we've had a lot, we've, we have had a fair bit of conversation about this internally, including with Chrissy Haskins, who is, you know, you know her role. Did you, were you at the sixty meeting or no? Oh, okay.
No, it was three, five, no, a week, it's a tough time to just.
I didn't go here.
So it's an operational meeting? I mean, it's not actually to the public, but it's not.
Here's, here's the challenge, that we're, we all, you know, I, I have some experience with municipal projects. That's what Chrissy does for a living, she, that's her, she's an engineer exclusively for a municipal project. There's a huge jump in information between sixty and ninety in terms of understanding what the, what a reasonable scope is and the cost. Until, when you're at sixty, what you can say is, this is what we, this is, this is what's been accomplished in terms of investigation and due diligence. And this is what we're going, this is what we're gonna do in the next, between sixty and ninety. And this is what we're gonna learn. But at ninety, you have an appreciable increase in, in information that doesn't disturb and frighten people. At sixty, it's like, anything under the sun could be what this project is. And it tends, as it, as was evident in the meeting, it gets, it's very frustrating for people. Like, you know, you, you know, we've done this, that and the other, but you can't tell me, is it gonna be mound, is it gonna be, is it gonna, where is it gonna be? Is it gonna, is it gonna hit my pocketbook with increased taxes? At ninety, we can actually say, a reasonable project for this town is located on this site or that site, it's of this type or it's that type, and it costs roughly this or it costs that. Which is, you know, and we have some experience in, in town with projects, municipal projects that we undertook and they, the information was conveyed in a way which made it difficult to take in, you know, in, you know, in a non-threatening way. And so that's.
I guess I'd like to add a little bit, I think we can go, not quite so far, because there are a lot of questions that are unanswered, but to take a little bit of what we've learned, or not what we've learned, but why are we even taking the time to look at this? Where have we gotten funding so far to hire an engineering firm and to do some research and some planning? And this, and not even get to the point where we say, it's gonna be here, it's gonna be that, or it's gonna do this, but just.
You're gonna make those questions.
Why are we even looking at this? But if we wait, I, I fear if we wait till like that meeting that we had for the water, we wait till we're at ninety and we just say, hey, everybody.
Well, ninety's not that meeting, ninety's not a town meeting.
No, 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 but I'm just saying, if we do wait to that ninety to say anything, let's, I'm, I'm assuming, I know there are a lot of people who know a fair amount of what's going on, but there's, maybe some people don't know anything.
Right.
And to say, I think we can present a little bit more than not.
Well, there's, I mean, there are slides that I think.
Oh, I know there are, but we haven't presented them. And I think there's some, there's some internal reluctance to present anything. But I think we can present some.
I think it's, it's, I, my understanding is for the reason that I've just described, which is they're very technical, it's hard to distill the information in a way which is not going to engender a lot of concern. And in June, like, around the corner, we're gonna have really good data and we're gonna have really good information to present. So it's, you know, but, you know, again, I, I'm not hard over on it, but it just, that's my personal view, like.
Yeah, I think there's a lot of possibilities.
In two months, we're gonna have so much data.
They've gotten sixty-five thousand dollars to investigate the possibility of a, of a water and sewer solution for the town. And I'll just say what it is, but we're looking.
I got a point, or we're getting into a serious discussion about this that, and it should have been warned on the agenda if we keep discussing this.
But we're not making, we're not making.
I know, but still, what if some people wanted to be here to, to get in on this question?
But I think we're not making this decision.
What Derek asked, and what, where we're going.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a lot of discussion.
Right, but isn't that like, I don't think it's, it's simply, I don't think it's a point of order. I mean, I think if you'd like us to reprise this at the next meeting, I'm happy to put it back on the agenda.
Yeah, I think two weeks, people know what we're talking about.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Instead of, I don't, or, you know, maybe an extra fifty people will tell me.
I guess the line for me is, it was a public meeting, the sixty percent? So any information that was shared at that meeting, we have due diligence to share with the public, even if they couldn't make the meeting. Right now, we haven't done that. So I, and I also feel like it's better to give information and be transparent than withholding information. And I recognize, I'm, you're a point warrior.
Well, I just.
But not giving any information.
More people should hear what we're saying.
Creates more questions than giving some. And I read it and found it was very informative and that backstory was really helpful. That, that's me as a citizen, but as a select board, I feel like it was a public meeting and people are being penalized for not being able to take off work to go by not having information. So we have an obligation to share what was shared at that meeting, because if they were here, they would have seen it. So.
And that is a plain and, a plain direct point of your making.
Right. And if they, let's put a caveat, draft, sixty percent information, answers aren't all there. You know, just like, put a caveat, but I just feel like it's a, it was a posted meeting and we, you know, there are no minutes about it, so we should just post the report and call it, you know. Let people have questions. Trust the public to, you know, explore.
Any further, I'm happy to, I mean, I know Eddie had a concern about continuing the conversation, but I don't want to stop any conversation anymore.
I think the concern is a valid one, but that's exactly what we're talking about. It's a concern that we haven't posted enough or that we haven't had enough people involved or, or people didn't have a chance to chime in tonight. And it's not, we're not looking for input or, or proposing help with.
Right, right.
But again, I think it's very much appropriate to put it on the, on the next meeting too. I mean, I think it should be a continuous thing.
Right.
And that may not every meeting, but it's an ongoing thing.
So I mean, I guess. I mean, it's not, just as a point of order, it's not for us to just, there's a, there is a committee.
Right.
So this.
And me being the representative, I'm trying to say, you being the representative more on this committee, I can take it back to the committee.
Right.
And to, to hear this input and as a committee, we can decide how and when and what and where to post it or to share it.
Yeah.
Again, and obviously not trying to hide anything, it's just, because it's so lacking, like you said. I mean, there's a lot of details that aren't there yet and it sounds like it's sixty percent, but it's really thirty percent.
It's not, not in terms of, of information that would be consumed by a town person.
Yeah.
It's, you know.
It's, it's much less than sixty percent, is what we can say. Because there's, the, the plan's not there yet, there's no plan, it's working on a plan.
But I'm, I'm saying that based on the questions that we have all gotten historically. But I'm, I'm saying that based on the questions that we have all gotten historically. What do people ask? What do they want to know? And I, what was discussed at the 60 and what was included in the slides that I saw is not what people, at least not historically, what they're asking to learn.
Well, that, I think, is beside the point. As a citizen, if it was a warned meeting that I couldn't attend because it was in the middle of a workday, I should have access to some of the information that was shared at that meeting. And I think that's the principal at question. Whether or not the public is going to have more questions about it than you have answers for, whatever, that's irrelevant. Because it was a warned meeting. And I think that's, for me, that's the principle that I'm hearing.
Right.
Is
Whether it's statutory or not.
Exactly. Like what is your responsibility to the public? Because you had this warned meeting that people now would like to know what happened in that meeting and don't have, there's no minutes, there's no information.
Unless it was recorded, let's just post the report, but I don't think
I don't, I don't know. It's, it's subject to
It was an open meeting.
It was an open, right. Subject to the open meeting rules, but it's not the same as like the rules for this committee. So like the committee that you're on will operate like the waters, the wastewater committee. So your meetings, the meetings will be warned
Yep.
A day before. We will take minutes, but it's, you know, and anybody can attend. But that's kind of where it stands. You know, part of the law is to not burden the governmental process while at the same time keeping it, you know, transparent.
Right, I think, I'm just going to say this, that there's also an opportunity to manage the perception of the process. So
Yes.
Right now, there's chatter. And people are asking questions that they don't, they can't even find information, a base level information about. So, and there can be a perception of not being transparent in this process. And so I hear that there's a balance of not wanting to overload and create more concern. A lot of times, you know, fear comes from the unknown and we don't have those answers yet because we're in this like very preliminary planning stage.
Right.
At the same time, you want to be transparent enough so that people can trust government to be in their best interest and to be sharing information in a timely way rather than the perception of this is a certain agenda that's going to get rammed through until it's at another point and then we're going to drop it on.
All right, but there's ramming through. That's, I mean, this has happened so slowly. There have been so many open meetings. We're going to know a ton in June and then there's going to be a long horizon before there's a town meeting. So there's not going to be ramming anything. I like, I think we need to say out loud on camera, this is a slow, deliberate process. I, I understand there's a desire for information. Greg's going to take it back to the committee to say, even though the 60 is not, is going to be a little bit, is going to be unsatisfactory. The good news is the 90, which is in June, is going to have a lot of really, really helpful media information that will indeed answer the questions that are predominantly posed.
And potentially, if you are sharing some of that 60%, can potentially generate interest for people to be involved at the 90% level, to have their questions answered so that they're more prepared when it comes time to take a vote or ask questions or provide input, whatever that process ends up being.
Which the flyer online right now posts that starting April, there are going to be public informatory meetings and sessions. So also, people are looking at that. They're like, it's April, why have we haven't seen it? So I'm just, I just want to honor what we're posting.
Okay, so just as a little thing, and Greg, you correct me if I'm wrong. When the snow melts, that's the first round of information gathering. And when, once some information has been gathered, there'll be an informational meeting.
Because it's I don't have it in front of me, but it was not, beginning April was to do onsite work.
Right.
Testing.
Right, right.
Things like that.
So ask those results.
feasibility stuff, but not, not presenting stuff because they're still gathering data.
Right.
But we'll, I'll take it back to the committee and say, as a committee, I'm hearing, hearing the concerns for sure. And good, I, I agree with it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I think just, I think we'll always come out ahead by being more transparent. Just as a rule of thumb, that's going to be my, my down approach.
And you had something else, which was the
Well, yeah, the town administrator report, just to acknowledge that, I don't know if we, if you my first monthly report that I've seen, I know that's a normal part.
No, it's new, well, it's newish.
Or can it be something that we should, because there's a lot of interesting information on there. I don't know if there's any questions. I know there's one comment about the town hall heating and if it's
Oh, well, that's, that is an ongoing topic that comes up that when we, when we have information that where the board has to take a decision about the upgrades and leading up to that decision, it's going to, you'll see it on the agenda. And then Mike's going to be in the hot seat. But to be honest, for, at least certainly in my tenure and I think in pretty much everybody's tenure here, Mike is our first part-time town administrator. So so I, I don't have experience with pushing up those reports. I think Mike would have to kind of approach them slightly. Dick, I mean, not that Mike is anything other than absolutely professional in everything he says and writes, but Mike, do you, what, how did it work in, in, in your last position? Were the, were the reports published on the town website or?
Well, that wasn't necessarily a pretty good one.
Oh, you were, you were or we're not?
No, I was more just, just for us as a select board, if there are any questions that we had regarding any of the
Well, if I had a question for Mike, I'd ask him.
You, yeah, you should, yeah, go directly to Mike, yeah.
Anyone in town can call Mike up and ask a question.
Anytime, which I did in my email to everybody's asking, are they considering heat pumps? Are they looking into that?
Right, right.
Because that's, that's the direction we should be going.
Right, and then if anything comes out of your one-on-one with Mike that you want to surface to an agenda item, just let me know. Or, or ask Mike and, you know, it can be, you know, Mike has presented in the past. So there could be something that comes up where, you know, based on your conversation with him, it makes sense for him to present at the next meeting. I thought what you were saying is suggesting to post that
No, no, more just
Along the lines of transparency.
The question about the heat pump and then just if, if there are, if we get these monthly, is that an opportunity for Mike to, you know, are there any highlights or anything that he wants to share to the whole board as opposed to one-on-one? Do we, does that
Yeah, I mean, I think that's, that's, right, but it's organic. So if you see something that strikes you and that you're in conversation with him about and you want it on the agenda, absolutely, just pop me an email and we'll get it on the agenda. Yeah.
And I like the heat pump idea.
The splits. Splits, yeah, splits are Yeah.
A lot of my customers are taking heat pumps out.
Yeah, they're, oh, guest care.
I would just like to say, it would be really nice if we had AC in the town hall for the summer with the events that we have going on.
Right, right. The splits are more for air, quite frankly, because they need a secondary heat source no matter what. But they're nice to tap off heat and, or in the, in the like fall and early spring. But, you know, they don't operate below, like what is it? Like 20 degrees or something?
I, I think they also work really well if you keep your building heated and they're consistent. Whereas in the town hall, it's completely off until you turn up the heat. So a heat pump really won't work that well in that situation.
Unfortunately.
And it's a big building, so.
Right, right.
That building needs a lot of work.
It really does.
And that's like another, I mean, do we have a committee for that, Joe?
For the town hall?
Yeah.
Who's it?
Well, Mike's looking at it.
Right, 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 right.
They need to be painted and you were getting off. What was your question?
My is generally about, I guess
Well, it was on the town report, so it was just about that.
Right, right.
I think Mike's been working on a lot of
Yeah, Mike was a lot of
Facilities, maintenance programs, everything regarding all of our properties.
Right, right, not just the town hall.
And not just town hall, not just paint or heat, but
Right, library.
There's a lot of nuances behind it, like, you know, Karen alluded to with the heat pumps. I mean, they might, they work good in certain situations and not others. And that's a big space. Even propane versus fuel oil in that big space has some pros and cons and some cost.
Huge cost, huge cost attributable.
Is that building a historical you registered?
Yes.
So then you've got additional regulations. So you can't just put
And heat About a stage, yeah.
Mike, is that something that you're, you're already kind of invested in that process of assessing the, the regulations for the historical and, and all other aspects of that building? It's already on your priorities, is what I'm asking you or stating. The town hall.
I don't know if you know.
He's not hearing me.
But yes, the answer is yes.
I'm sorry to call that out. So Mike, so what do I do? I, I guess what's the, the question for Mike is
I was just confirming that he's well aware of the needs in there and that is part of the scope of what he's working on in his role.
Yeah, I mean, that, what Derek is reacting to with the relatively detailed, you know, report that he did that touched, one of the topics was infrastructure in some of the town buildings. Yeah.
And that was just a
Right.
A 5%
Right, it wasn't even right. Exactly, exactly, exactly.
Thank you.
Good. Okay, all right. So that takes, thank you, Derek, going through your two items. So item eight on the agenda is to review and approve the time sheets for the town office Lister's Highway Transfer Station. Please don't leave without signing it. To anybody, I'll make a motion to approve the time sheets for all of the above.
So.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions, concerns?
We should be.
Guess we should.
Sarah has stepped in and she's doing payroll. So, yeah, God bless her. God bless her.
You know, I do have some discussion. I don't know when we started voting on approving these payrolls. Do you remember when we started doing that?
Great. I can
Other towns do it, it's, it's normal.
I can bring it up to
I just had it, just a question.
It, it happened, it hadn't happened prior to this. It was always a cursory, I don't know if that's the right word, but it was of like, oh, and we'll sign off on all payrolls. Bye, everybody. And then we sign them. And there was never a formal motion to accept the payrolls. During COVID, Terry started posting those up onto the website because we were doing remote meetings for us to all see them. So it actually eased the process a little bit because we were able to review those prior to the meeting and then make a formal approval process and a motion to approve. Tonight's a little different because they hadn't been.
Loaded up.
They haven't been loaded up.
The payroll are on there, but the AP is not. I just pushed that.
We all know the one I just gave.
It's a little bit of the history. As a, we should approve or disapprove or
All of them.
All of the time as what we do, that is something that we do as a board.
Yeah.
But we usually look at them.
Right, exactly.
Yeah.
And this is another thing that with the loss of our treasurer, we're going to have
You should really be looking at them. Yeah, like I'm not saying, I'm not trying to be as smart as I am. You should really be looking at them. I didn't feel that you were really looking at them, yeah.
But, you know, to Derek's point that, I don't know if you've been on the board long enough where she would upload those.
No.
And we would look, can look at them before. I must tell you that sometimes I don't look at them until I get here or that day. We can come in and look at them all week, as soon as there, whatever's there.
After four.
But yeah, I didn't mean to, I didn't mean to imply we don't do that.
It's a barrier, just why?
How it She would just kind of study them here, some nights, me and Tom. But that's the first time I got to look at them.
Right. But happily, for a few years, it's been posted in advance. It's just we're getting through a period right now. And so we're, we should be kind on ourselves to say, yeah.
That's what I was trying to make.
Yeah.
Yeah, I didn't take it differently.
No.
So does that make a case for making sure we look at them before we approve them?
Well, you could vote, I haven't looked at them either. One thing I
Payroll is people's pay. So if you want to take a minute right now and look at them, I would prefer that we not leave this meeting without approving people's pay. They were posted, it was posted.
The payroll were on the draw, yeah. I did get the payroll. I just, I just finished the AP at four and there's so many staples and paper clips. I'm like, there's no way this is happening today. Maybe next time, but don't get your hopes up.
Right.
So we can read all that through. I do have one, I, I do have something that
On payroll?
No, not on payroll. But we're all looking at this, if that makes sense. I look at this prior to approving them and to fill downtime.
Yeah.
We, this is from Triple T, from, Casella has purchased Triple T. And kind of who was going, I mean, we were with Casella. We, our contract expired, we put it out to bid, et cetera, et cetera. We accepted Triple T. Now Triple T's been purchased by
Yes, by Casella.
So as of the start of April, our contracting, they're fulfilling our current contract. So nothing from the base area should change up there. We just wanted to public to know and wanted the board to know if anybody had heard that, so.
Yes.
And I said, I mean, sorry, I always saw that in there.
There was some competition.
But
It's not a monopoly, but I think it's like an oligopoly. I think there's like basically two major providers.
Yeah.
It went from three to two.
So I, I just put that out there for public. So I just put that out there for public, you know, since I'm in charge of the basket now.
Hey, you know, you step down from the chair, you can't step down from the basket.
Andy, it's over in front of Jessica.
Oh, you're looking for a pen? Here, use mine. Use mine.
I'll get that pen. Last thing I can.
He's not going without his pen.
I have lots of news. If anybody wants to hear it, don't worry.
Yeah, I mean, I want to hear everything, but in public, I'd like, yeah, I want everyone to hear. Is that okay?
That's fine.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I could sign them out. I mean.
That's a whole.
This is the whole packet.
It's a fun packet.
It's a fun packet.
One signature, Sarah?
Hmm? No, everybody needs to sign.
Everybody signs.
No, I need to, one page?
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make sure you saw, because I know you and Terry would like photocopy it. So it was on the same page, so you guys were only.
No, we're doing, good.
Yes.
I showed up. I'm doing great.
I think I'm out. I wanted to look at the show notes report.
There's no care.
Oh, there is.
No, not this, not this area there.
Okay.
That's the pay order. The timesheets. I don't even know what to do.
Well, it looks like, has everyone now looked at payroll timesheets?
No.
Yes, this one. Yes.
Yep.
Okay, so if I could call a vote on approving the payroll? All those in favor say aye. Oh, there was seven, yeah. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No? And then once everyone's had a chance to take a look at the pay orders, please let me know.
Be the last pay order you sign for Terry Garrett.
Does everyone have a chance to see the pay orders?
No.
Oh, the payrolls?
Pay orders.
But not the other, oh, the payrolls, no, not the payrolls. They haven't come this way.
Send that down to Greg.
No, I'm one of those. I have to say this.
Yeah, this one, me, Derek and Greg signed. This Susan Hall, I don't know about, you know, I don't know if that's right.
Very transparent.
Yeah, right. It's a little bit, there's transparency and then there's transparency.
She's shady.
We were on for that in the beginning and we said no. You can do it now. Do you want to vote?
No, no, I have a book.
Yeah, only controls for people whose books are here are still.
Yes.
I don't have to print it. I don't have to print it because it's.
I like putting my stuff in it, putting it in the binder.
It's okay.
Okay.
I, I have a little, another. It's just hard because it's cheap.
Well, mine's right on my desk. You both can use it anytime. I'll show you where it is after today. It's a really nice one. I picked it out.
She's.
Picked it hundred times. And when she worked there before, she's like, I picked that out. I was like, oh, that's great.
It is. It's like the best old.
Right, it's sharp.
Tools, she is. It's a good tool.
Yes, exactly, exactly. All good? So I'd like to make a motion to approve the pay orders.
Second.
Terrific. Any discussion on the pay orders? No discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? Thank you. All right, public concerns, let's hear about the library.
Very preliminary. We're waiting to hear from the district coordinator about the Department of Agriculture's rules and how they may or may not change. But we are looking to partner with the community church to become a food distribution site this summer for families with children zero to 18 years old. So we're not sure yet what the logistics of that will be, but we're in the planning and developing stages of that and we're looking to get some families fed this summer.
What would that look like? Like.
The best case scenario would be that it would be like a CSA pickup. And so volunteers would go and pack the boxes probably the day before. We would drive them to the church because the church has refrigeration available.
Okay.
And then would do some kind of library programming in conjunction with the food distribution of that family's. The best case scenario is that it doesn't need to be consumed on site. It's still, there, that's where we're still waiting to hear from the Department of Agriculture about whether the rules change.
Whether it can be taken off, like you can take it home.
Right, there were some things put in place because of COVID that they're finding actually are a good best practice. So we're waiting to hear from, about the formal rules of that, but that would be the best case scenario. And we'll know more kind of mid-April.
And this would be a summer time, like in between, bridging the school year or anything?
Yeah, it's related to the, the current school lunch program.
Right.
And so it's, it's, you don't have to qualify and you don't have to show proof of any kind of financial status. You just have to have a child in your household, zero to 18 years old, and you can have access to these food boxes.
And then you would do like a library program in conjunction with that.
You know.
Story telling or?
Yeah, music or something. Yeah, so it was very exciting. The, the school district food service coordinator was, was right on board when we suggested it. Jamaica Community Church has been absolutely supportive and right on board as well. So that's been an exciting development. We're looking.
I can't even think of one near us.
There's one.
Like that this summer. Is there?
The London Gray, they have New Brook, especially because they do their summer camp. So it ends up being in conjunction with that.
They tie it together.
I know there are a couple other sites, but there's, there wasn't anything in our region and Jamaica qualifies. So.
Very exciting.
Yeah, it's a great, great program. And it's been really wonderful to be partnering with other people in town who've been as enthusiastic to get that going.
It's amazing.
Yeah, good stuff.
Any other public concerns?
I don't know, wait, Jared.
Two problems.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.